Debbie Smith, the director, is going to be presenting.
Sixty-three.
All right, actually, Debbie, by me on page sixty-three? So our budget actually is pretty much the same as it was last year. As far as personnel, we do have one new employee that was hired, our housing rehab coordinator, that's on page sixty-four. We are actually still waiting to fill a community development specialist position. And then the ECD specialists will not be in our budget for next year.
Is that which one movie?
That was actually Chris Groner's position.
So that's been moved to?
Office of the administration, I think, or?
Got a mental block on that.
So we've actually asked, as far as the operation, operating expenses for the same appropriations balances that we had last year. This budget, I guess I didn't realize, was until ten-thirty of 2024. Where there, where you do see balances, we all actually have expenses for November and December, so most of that money will be expended there. But pretty much everything that we had last year is the same thing that is in the budget this year.
Any questions?
OIG audit?
Yeah.
All right, so that audit actually was from fiscal year 2015 to eighteen. OIG came in. It was a different administration. And it actually took this long to actually kind of, I guess, settle on a lot of the different things. So the city won't be affected as far as paying anything back. There were the managers for code enforcement. Because his timesheet was not signed by a supervisor and he didn't have detailed information as far as the different things that he was doing, that was something that was ineligible. We also had a code enforcement officer that was out of the area. I believe that was maybe, I want to say, thousand, something odd dollars. The manager's position was, do you remember offhand? Eighty, eighty or ninety, about eighty-something or ninety thousand dollars, I'm not sure. But what HUD has allowed us to do is to reduce what we will receive in CDBG. And so for our fiscal 2025 allocation, it will be reduced by that amount. So the city won't be affected as far as having to pay any funding back.
How much will be reduced by?
Is it ninety? Do you guys know offhand? Is it ninety? Hundred and thirteen, fifteen thousand maybe? I don't remem-- I'll have to get the report, I'm not real sure, I don't remember. But that was from, oh, and then there were some police, it was supposed to be neighborhood policing. And so there were, I guess, logs for time when some of the police officers were absent, but there were no logs that they could actually find. And so actually, we've been working with this OIG audit for several years now. And so actually, what we will be reimbursing HUD back is actually way lower than what they originally wanted. They wanted actually some millions of dollars.
Thank you.
Our CDBG fund had been getting lower and lower, though.
It has. But we just felt it'd be easier to reduce the CDBG funding than to ask the city of Erie to take it out of general fund.
What is, what is our HUD funding at this year, like four million or three point six or something?
Last year, I think, was two point nine.
Two point nine. So your office is pretty much, is it doing, not the, what else is it doing beyond HUD?
You mean as far as CDBG?
What is it doing beyond administering HUD funds?
We have a fair grant. We are able to, actually we're able to do, I mean, in previous years, we used to do the RAPP grant. There was EDI grants that we had.
So this is some past tense.
These, well, they're not, we just recently, well, we have a fair grant now. We have a ARC grant that we just actually completed. There's a grants department, so the grants don't come through our department. Some of the other grants don't come through our department. So we have CDBG, we have ESG, we have home investment partnership. We have the home, ARP homeless grant that we'll be administering. So those are the federal grants that we have.
So you listed off the three different HUD grants, you had home, CBDG, what was the third one?
Emergency Solutions.
Emergency Solutions. And, and those combined for, you said, those can be combined?
No, so two point nine, we got two point nine for CDBG last year. We got nine hundred and sixty-something thousand for home. And for ESG, we got maybe two hundred and seventy-something thousand dollars.
So four million-ish?
Yeah, probably about that.
Personally, and this isn't any reflection on you, this isn't, some of the stuff we point out that you used to have, I'm worried about redundancies in administrative costs for our, for our city government. I don't, I'm, I'm curious if we're still aligned as efficiently as we need to be with these, with these additional grant administrators in other departments. But I do have some big concerns, just in change of political environment. You know, last time we saw this upcoming presidential administration, we saw billions of dollars cut from HUD. And that seems to be the, the promise of our Department of Government Efficiency. And if we're still running this department at the cost of one point three million dollars to administer three million dollars.
Well, our funding actually comes from HUD, the administration part of it. The city doesn't, the city only re, we reimburse the city. And we, the city only charges us for whatever we may do that is not part of CDBG home, ESG, or the home ARP.
Like, and if I recall from the previous conversation, it's like eighty, like when we did our HUD funding, it was like about eighty-one percent of your budget comes from reimbursements from HUD.
Yeah, I think it actually may be more than that.
Okay, maybe a little more than that. I'm trying to recollect from, what was it, like April? I know you're living this, and I just, I just pop in and talk to you twice a year, so, you know. But this is, I mean, if we're talking about four million dollars in administration of, of funding and being administered, that I believe is going to be cut. And that we lost a couple hundred thousand or a hundred and ninety thousand or something. So it's going to be even less. And the funds to, to manage this department are one point three million dollars.
I don't know about one point three, well.
One point two nine four million dollars.
Okay.
And so I'm, I'm not suggesting it changes, I'm not. But I'm, I'm suggesting that we need to maybe reflect on some of these things and tighten in and try to figure out how this office is done as HUD funding continues to decrease. And as responsibilities have been taken out of this office that may be time to look at some organizational issues.
Well, to say this, as far as the HUD funding, we do all the things that are required by HUD. So it's not like we are, there's a cushion there where we're not doing things. We, HUD actually has individuals that work for them that may do environmental review. One person would do that. One person would do maybe just CDBG or a couple people. One person would do ESG, one person would do monitoring. So we, and there, there are other things that are involved with, with HUD. So the things that we do in our office that we get reimbursed for are things that are required by HUD. And so when you talk about maybe trying to decrease or trying to, I guess, go, go back on funding or whatever, we're doing what we're supposed to do that is required by HUD. And so I guess I look at the fact when you say some of the other grants that are not in our office anymore. So those were part of the local match. And so now, they won't be part of what the city would pay. Our funding, we pay for what we get from HUD. And the people that work in our office work on different things. And HUD funding is not an easy funding to administer.
Oh, I've seen the paperwork, it's, it's wild.
It is.
I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to do this as, as politely as I can without being anything too critical. I'm worried that the funding for this has decreased over years. I'm worried that we're in a political climate where it's going to be, it was billions of dollars that were slashed from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty on this. Or twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, we're in the same political climate, but with more enthusiasm maybe. And the cost for this department have gone up with some of those things being, you know, I mean, we're, we're up in three years with less money, we're up a couple hundred thousand. If these are pitching in on margins.
We do have a surplus of admin money that we haven't expended over the years, so that would actually kind of cover that. I don't think, actually, I don't think we have enough employees, so.
I agree with you. When I was at the front desk, so many people came in and asked for your services. So you had to, Veronica and, so. Yeah, Chiteria and yourself, you know, spending the time with all of these people, assisting them. And I, I really felt the need that there should be more people, to tell you the truth. You spent a lot of time with them.
And I'll, I want to say this also, as far as like, I guess, when you look at the salaries and things, I think we're actually underpaid. I mean, if you look at other communities that administer HUD funding, they get paid a whole lot more than what we get paid.
And there's, there's a couple mid-year raises that, that we don't see on our paperwork. But if people recall getting the updates on those that happened, I think there was at least two or three of them. I'm, I'm just concerned that at some point, it may be more expensive to run this office than the money we're even receiving. That's, if it's to manage four million dollars and it costs one point three and the one point four, or the four million goes down and this goes up, that at some point, we're going to be spending two million dollars to administer two million dollars. And I know that's, you know.
We are, we're only allowed to take twenty percent of CDBG, ten percent of home, and seven point five percent of ESG. So that's not a whole lot of money.
Yeah. Okay, and how much of our HUD might went to paving this year out of the form, like, I think we, ballpark, ballpark, you can.
It was probably, I want to say, close to maybe two million. We had reprogramming dollars that we gave to the department. And I don't know if it's all paid, and some of the street reconstruction, some of it's handicapped curtsies. Some of it is, we gave streets and handicapped curtsies a whole lot of money this year.
And I know that's particularly high because our bond has expired and because of ARP money going into other programming. So I mean, it's, we've, we've already been through that back in April. But is that any, any easier for you to administer? Because it's one, one objective and, and one location? Like administering two million dollars to our paving budget versus all the thirty and forty and a hundred thousand dollar grants you do?
Well, not necessarily. Because there are different locations, the weather plays a part on administering that program. We still have a deadline that we have to meet as far as reaching, expending a certain amount of dollars per HUD. So it involves a whole lot of different things. Any other questions?
It's just me, I'm sorry.
Here's the reimbursement.
Oh, thank you.
Up on the screen. And that shows up on line item, revenue account number thirty-six fifty-five.
And Deb, let me absolutely assure you, my biggest concern in this whole conversation is that funding is going to get cut further with HUD and Department of Government Efficiency or whatever it's called.
And it has been each year, and we kind of work with who we have. And as I mentioned before, we don't have one person who is, who does just one thing. Everybody works and participates and we're a team and everybody pitches in when they can.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Justin, do you want to sit over with her, because you're like the administrator.
So it's page eighteen and nineteen? Eighteen and nineteen in the budget.
I mean, I think the year went by fast. No one went on any specific trips or any type of trainings that I know of.
This time of the life, I mean, we have shirts, so thanks to you.
I went to Cincinnati.
Yeah, she went to Cincinnati and we had homecoming, Chambers Homecoming. We did that, it's, there's a couple things that we took out.
Any question?
We reviewed the stuff for the clerk's office and we asked for a little bit more money in overtime and also in advertising from last year. And we still have some left, but we do most of our advertising in December, or a lot of it, and.
Increase in educational training with the new deputy clerk?
Yes, we did ask that, just in case there's something that comes up. And you never use that professional services.
We need it.
But it's always good to have, just in case.
I agree.
Worst case scenario, we have a surplus in our budget at the end of the year.
So, yeah, if we find some places to go, we'll borrow. What else?
We don't use flex times, we use overtime in our, why?
I don't know. We, I don't think it's legal to use flex time. We've always did time and a half. We've been at, we added them some hours this year for the budget sessions because we didn't know if you guys would need anything and.
I just like to hear you talk.
I talk too much. But we, Lisa and Melissa gave us everything that we thought we would need. So, yeah. There's really, unless you have any questions, I was pleased.
I, I think a handful has talked about this in smaller groups in various spots casually. But with the departure of Marilyn this year and a new deputy clerk, I'd like to end the fact that pretty much every other department that comes in here, someone got a mid-year salary raise that, that was allocated for. I'm, I'm hoping to see your, your salary for twenty-five get bumped up to seventy-eight thousand. Is what I think the, a couple different people on council have suggested.
Thank you.
Obviously, that's something that needs voted on as part of the consolidation that we do at the end, but.
All opposed?
And that's something that has been discussed with, I think I just threw the straw that said, that I was going to say it on the record. But I think every, I think I've spoke to, I'm not sure, I don't remember if I spoke to Moe or not, but I think I've spoke to everyone here at some point. I wasn't even willing to suggest that number, I think I set around up to a little less than that.
I think I heard that when I was talking to God. Good move.
Thank you.
I'm, I mean, and it's definitely been recognized that your hard work and everything that you do in our office keeps all of us on council ready and prepared. So when Chuck brought it to my attention, I was in favor. And when he started throwing out numbers, I was not against anything. I know that you were a little hesitant on bringing up the conversation just because compared to what council members make, you don't want to ask for anything, yeah.
She also currently makes less than previous.
Yeah, and when he brought up the history, I was definitely in favor of bringing you up to where past people have been in the past. Because you're definitely an asset and we want to make sure that we're, you know, making our people who are holding us up when we're not here every day, five days a week, are being recognized, so.
Seven days a week, sometimes.
Yeah, because we get emails and stuff on the weekend.
It's an effort, though, it's the whole office, we're a great team, I think.
Definitely, and we're happy that Kelsey's back from, you know, maternity leave and with Marilyn retiring, we've had a great deputy clerk join the team.
Not too many hiccups.
Yeah, Mike has definitely been an asset as well. He joined with flawless effort, so that's always very, very much appreciated.
He's been so diligent, I'm really excited about that.
His thirty days was over yesterday, so we're keeping him.
That's good news.
All right, Lucy, you have it for a roundup at the end when we.
Yeah, I got it.
To increase, it takes a supermajority, just to remind everyone of what the rules are on that stuff.
Just five.
And I, I just wanted to point out, I, I told you probably the first session about the fact that we decided to do the group insurance by averaging it across, basically by headcount. And we tried to do something different this year in twenty-four and it, it, this is, and, this failed in the council department especially, because we budgeted thirty-two thousand and then a couple more people got insurance and we're way over budget. So we're going to fix all that at the end of the year, but we went back to averaging.
How's that with this? So we had a little deficit as well, but.
Yeah, well, at the end of the year, we'll, we'll adjust, adjust all of those. And just do a reclassification, put everything in the right budgets.
Does the council have any other questions for the clerk's office or council's office?
Go out, you're ready.
All right, so looking at our 2025 proposed budget, the only thing that really sticks.
Yes, well, well, the, the good thing that we did when we originally, at the end of December thirty-first, January of this year, we had roughly around, I think it was seven thousand liens. But we extended to twenty-three till, to the end of May. So we, we were able to pay, where people were able to pay that many twenty-three liens or stormwater fees before we started leaning them. And that brought us down to the fifty-three hundred. So that part was good, but we still had these fifty-three hundred people who we haven't, you know, hadn't paid their twenty-three. So we started leaning them, and since we've started leaning them, a few people have started coming in and paying them before we have to go over to the county courthouse and go through that process. So that part is a good thing, but just in itself, it's overwhelming for one person to be doing that and teller work. So that's why we're asking for a new, another teller, so we can dedicate this person to those liens.
And they would be able to work as a teller as well?
Yes.
After the liens are caught up? Because I think that's the concern, is that once we're all caught up with the liens, we're paying for a whole person, what's that person going to be doing outside of liens? And, you know, I, I get, I go over there sometimes and it gets pretty busy. So I understand the need for tellers during certain times of the year to have an extra person, especially when people are paying taxes, when people are coming to get caught up on their stormwater fees or other things that you guys handle. So I just think that the concern of the effective, the effectiveness of adding another person is something that a lot of council members are going to be concerned because of the expense of adding another full-time employee, plus the pension, plus everything that comes with a new employee. Which is something we were talking about when we were talking about the sewer and the refuse.
I, I do know that, and I, I think that part of the year, Public Works has a part-time employee who was helping out in the beginning doing like answering stormwater fees and whatnot. I think they were doing somewhere in the neighborhood of like twenty hours a week or something like that. I mean, even if we can get something like that, it, it's going to be helpful because we are, you know, we're basically swimming right now, you know? We're, I don't want to say we're drowning, but it is.
Treading in water.
Treading in water, there we go. It is getting more and more difficult.
How many stormwater customers are there, do you know that?
We send out thirty-seven thousand.
Okay, so the, the number of liens is never going to go away. They're not going to get caught up, every year there'll be new liens. And I would, and this is just a flat-out guess, that it's going to settle in at about ten percent. So thirty-eight hundred instead of fifty-eight hundred maybe. But it'll never go away, so that's something that we'd have to keep an eye on.
So at, at the time when I ran these numbers, we had ninety-four hundred of 2024 stormwater fees that hadn't been paid as of yet. So hopefully that number will come down, but that's where we're at when I ran these. And I think I ran these the middle of November.
Can we see about having this reimbursed from the stormwater fund if the cost is because of stormwater?
That'll be part of the central service reimbursement calculation.
We could call them a stormwater clerk. And their, you know, money would be paid for that clerk that way.
You brought in as a part-time employee, you save a lot of money in pension and things like that. The cost of the employee would be much lower in the short term anyway, to be fair. We need somebody there then.
Now, right.
I'm sure we need the.
The benefits cost thirty-five thousand a year, that's, that's the number.
Right, yeah.
So I mean, I mean, I, I'm always more comfortable paying someone a much higher, part-time hourly rate to avoid the benefits. And I'm setting some records, so hopefully Office B's not watching. I know they are.
Like, we understand the need, it's just the expense of adding another full-time employee. So like, let's look into numbers crunching for adding a part-time employee to your guys' office to get you guys balanced and settled as far as trying to get ahead of this new stormwater fee and all the liens that are being added to your workload because of that, there has been additional work added to your small office.
We need people for thirty-six bucks or twenty-four bucks.
Yes.
So it takes forty-five minutes to do a twenty-four dollar lien up.
Yes, the, the entire lien process is, I don't want to say it's tedious, but it, it, I mean, it, it, it is a full process.
I think what they wanted to prevent had, you were around when Mario made the great garbage mistake. And it kept multiplying. And the same thing happened with parking tickets, we didn't look at them aggressively. And sure, this year it's twenty-four, but if they see we're not going to come after them, it's going to be next year's twenty-four, and next year's twenty-four after that. So we all discussed this with, like, you know, and it, that was the only way that, if we're going to do this, let's do it serious. Otherwise, it, it's a joke and they're just not, they're going to sit on it. And some council in the future is going to have to figure out how to make up the deficit.
No, I just want a clarification, but I agree.
Does anyone else have any questions on the additional teller? Looking into the number crunching for part-time teller, because the need is there. We just know that we can't take on a full-time with the expense of thirty thousand dollars for the pension and the benefits at this time. We're trying to condense our numbers.
We show, we go with the part-time, let's break it, these.
Right.
Yeah, if we gave them fifty thousand casual labor, that would be still thirty thousand dollar savings from what you're asking for.
We brought up the, the union thing.
So.
Bringing somebody in and, in essence, breaking the union by, by doing that part-time thing, that rule. It's a good point. Solicitor might have to get involved with that one a little bit.
I mean, believe me, we can find enough work for that person either way, I mean.
What kind of time do we have? When's the peak time for these things to go out?
Well, there's different peak times, you can tell them that, there's.
So are we talking when the stormwater fee bills go out? They go out in January.
Yeah, when you start leaning up.
We're, we're leaning now.
Okay, so you need somebody yesterday.
Yes, yeah, we're leaning now.
I mean, sometimes your lines go way out your door.
Well, yeah, we got, well, we, we got dog licenses that come in at a certain time and then we got the various deadlines, stormwater, then the liens, and it's, so it's not like, you know, it's not like it's ever slack.
The dog license is one of those things that I never think of until someone says it. And then I say, oh yeah, why are we doing that still?
It's very intensive paperwork. I mean, it doesn't look like it's a big deal, but it ties up a teller who now can't do others.
From a state standpoint, that's a county responsibility. The county does it for every other municipality in our county, except for us. We charge something for it that's not a revenue source, frankly. And then we're. And then we're paying people to manage that. That's something that we may want to just get rid of.
Well, that's your decision.
Yeah.
It's not ours.
Yeah. How much time do you think gets invested in that? Do you think you give me a ballpark to see if it's worth cutting? Not, not tonight, not right now.
Yeah.
But like, how many licenses do you do a year? How much time effort is it? Because, you know, Antonio complains about it too. I mean, he's like, hey, he's dog license. I just had to do another one, you know, like, some of you guys think those are really no way to do.
Can't you get one that's forever?
Yeah, they have lifetime contracts. Yes, they do.
Or you just not do it.
It's my man.
So Chuck, why is it that everybody else can get it through the county, but not the city? When the city's in the county?
Because we thought we'd make a little money on it.
We even had cat licenses the one time. That didn't work out.
We got bike licenses. We got rid of those last year.
The coffee.
So it's something that it would be interesting to see if you guys have some, a better gauge of like, how many licenses are actually happening, how labor-intensive that is, to see if it's worth us getting rid of that ordinance and leaving it on the county.
Is it required in that county?
The county is required to do such things. The city is not. And it's slightly debatable as to whether or not.
I can't even remember when they did it. It was a while back.
Inquired a few views. And we discussed that.
Okay. Do you wanna wait until they get back?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I'm, I'm okay.
Two thousand and three, that's when we did dogs. Some of it was nineteen ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one is when?
So the laws are anywhere from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and three. Two thousand and three is the most recent update on Sullivan. So at the very least, we should look at the fee if it's not justified or just getting rid of the whole thing.
Yeah, I'd wanna see the breakdown of like, how much do we make for some expense there?
It's not our problem. What do you think so that?
Yeah, I mean, we decided to drop it and say, hey, Cameron, here it is.
Yeah, they do, they do, they do. I think this is the same ordinance we looked at when I was trying to put chickens on. So I remember spending some time with it two years ago or a year ago.
Changed the chicken.
And that's why we didn't change the law here now. But the most we ever get for any of these dog licenses is eight dollars, and that was last touched over twenty years ago.
Yeah, and fifty-seven, and even with the new up change, that's what I was doing right here. Like, the changes that are supposed to hit in twenty-twenty-four, it still is, it's the county that has to do it. So I think that we've, we've simply just made it easier for them in the city to do something that we're not really responsible for. And if it's expending a lot of energy, this could be another way of saving and transferring over some of the dues.
Yes, you don't have to do dog licenses anymore, but you have to do stormwater. We're counting that as a wash.
Well, if that's the case, we only do about four thousand dogs actually.
Now, do those payments come in together as one check usually? The stormwater and the taxes? Or do people pay them at different times?
They pay them at different times.
So that's twice as many checks?
Yes. They come in, and one of the things is that some people, you know, they'll pay their city and their county. Now, they all come in the same envelope, city, county, and stormwater. Come in the same envelope. But they'll pay their city and county, but they won't pay their stormwater. Some people will say, oh, I didn't know it was in there. I didn't see it, but.
My stormwater came separate.
This year? Twenty-twenty-three, they came separate, but twenty-twenty-four, they should have come together.
Yeah, the first year we got caught.
By itself? By that thing?
That's what we like to hear. But as for our tax collections, I think we've collected ninety-nine percent of the budgeted amount thus far as of eleven thirty. So we're hoping to get that last one percent for the end of the year. That's our goal.
And just first to start in our previous, that's my goal. Your goal. Good one.
You guys are, you guys are a big reason why we have to give our clerk a raise. Up until twenty-twenty-one, clerk always made more than the deputy treasurer. Now he's, under this budget, was originally proposed for fourteen thousand more than clerk. But up until twenty-twenty, clerk always made more than deputy treasurer. Twenty-twenty-one, that split was just a couple hundred bucks. It's continued to escalate to now that him being at fourteen thousand more. And so now we gotta catch our clerk up a little bit. Maybe we're not being generous enough with our staff is part of that. And then there's another part to it too, as big that spread's gotten.
Are you referring to Ed or?
Yeah, it's always odd.
Well, he's more than, he's more than deputy.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay? If I wanted to hire a deputy, I could find a deputy a lot less, but nobody. And I would, you can find somebody fine, okay? You're not gonna find anybody with his knowledge of the computer system, the ability to work with the computer department, the ability to work with the permitting department, the ability to get all the mailing out on time, all the money distributed. He's much more than the deputy. I had a deputy when I was, you know, a city controller, but he's almost like my assistant. And I would, I would put him in the same category that the mayor's assistant is. He's to me what she, what Renee is to the mayor. He does things that, I would have to have the computer department down there probably every day, working on problems and issues, how to, how to get things where they should be. He, he's a great savings to the city just in what he offers that way. A good computer man, I mean, over the years, even when I was at the school board, we can never keep him. So I mean, that, I, I don't look at him as that way.
All right, sorry, guys and ladies and everyone.
If the comparison's gonna be that sour, then we're gonna have to give Lori even a bigger raise. I'd like you to cool it down on that. If the comparison's gonna be to the way you did with the mayor thing, then we're gonna have to give Lori an even bigger raise. I want you to cool it down with that a little bit.
I'm just trying to, you know, I feel, you know, what I asked for was equitable with, with what he does, but.
You don't even like.
Hmm? You know what? I, I can give you this offer. Take away my raise in the future. No, I don't care. You know, he's.
Do you think you can make it with part-time?
Pardon?
Do you think you can make it with the part-time position instead of the full-time position?
What, a deputy?
No, 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 back to the.
A treasurer?
No, with the, with the teller position.
Realistically, I could do it, but I, I would, I would think we have enough work for a full-time position. And I can, and I, and if, if you would like to come and watch a day in my office, I'll let you make your own mind up.
When would you intend to hire that position? When stuff get busy for you?
Pardon?
When does stuff get busy for you? When would you intend to hire that position?
I guess that question, if they're right now.
Yeah, but you said water and stormwater. Like, I know there's certain times where things get crazy for you.
Well, never quite sound there. I mean, we, years ago, we had extra employees and for good reason, they cut them back. Okay, they cut them back because we lost income tax. We didn't take utility payments like we used to back when I, when I was really young. We took utility payments and everything. Those windows were loaded. Since, over the last year, since I joined City Hall, we added dog licenses, stormwater. That's all additions. And we never, and we actually gave up people during the flip year. They, they, they cut a couple people. So I'm just saying, you know, after I looked at it, after being here about six years, yes, I could work with a part-time employee, but I think we have enough work. I feel confident in saying there's enough work for a full-time employee. More than enough.
So, Ed, you and I were talking last week that bills go out, your, your bills are gonna go out in January.
Yes, the twenty-twenty-five.
So when do the payments start coming in?
So the payments start coming in right after they go out. So, I mean, the.
There's no pushing that. Got it.
But I guess.
I mean, you always have the ability. Next year, if you think it didn't work out, you can cut that employee. You know, but I'm, I'm telling you that it's, the best way for, I, I would invite you to come to the office. Just take a look at an average day.
What really surprises me is the amount of people that come in person. You know, they're just not sending it by mail. They're coming in person to do their business.
And, and you, I, I always did like the term teller. That's a bad term. Because when people apply for a job, they thought they were gonna sit in a chair like they do in a bank. That's not the job. The job for our teller, I'd like to change the wording, I guess we talked about it, to encompass what it really is. You, you are handling mail that's coming in, opening envelopes, checking the balances if they're not right. You have to take care of that. We have to take care of that. We have to mail it back to the customer or call them. So then, besides all that, you expect it to go up on the counter. When it gets busy, that means something is lacking. Something is suffering. And then you've got dog licenses at one time a year where that takes kind of preference. Then you've got city and school taxes at different dates. So the teller is never just a teller. They're doing a lot of different things. They're handling dog licenses, stormwater, also dealing with customers on the phone. It's, it's not a teller job. Teller job, you would be sitting in a chair, like I did when I was at the parking area. Took, I took money and I just handed them a ticket and that was it. Teller is not, doesn't even come close to explain that job.
I've known Ed long, long, probably longer than anyone here. And I believe he would not ask for a position if he didn't need it. And I will support it full-time.
Thank you.
You need super, right?
Yeah. To cut it would only be, uh, simple, but I'm not, I'm just kicking around, see if there's any appeal for it. Nobody seems very interested in running along with that, so, you know, I don't see it even being worth putting up this vote. Give him, give him all of it. It's good.
That means you have to go through the union to put somebody in there? That's the only reason for my part-time. You can pick who you wanted as in a part-time position.
I did part-time. I think also the union too, teller.
But there are some part-time positions that are in.
If they do work of a teller, then I think, those are beyond my job description. I'm thinking that if they do a job, there would normally be a teller or even something like it, then you got a problem. Like, we could bring an intern on, but the intern can't do any job that the union would handle more. It's a my boss.
Right, yeah, anything you do, you're going to have to talk to the union.
Cool.
But I think, you know, the added efficiency and what we'll do, I think it'd be, it'd be a no-brainer, really. But like I say, I welcome it. Come down and take a look.
I mean, I mean, it's going in the twenty-twenty-five budget, hopefully, so then we, you know, try and get them stirred up in twenty-twenty-five. Probably by the, I'd say no later than the end of, end of January, if it passed. You know, but as soon as.
Has been saying, give him a salary toward that, right?
Yeah, I think that's what I heard.
Any questions? All right, I'd like to, I'd like to just take five minutes and review the controller's budget. She wasn't able to come tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Really, nothing's changed. They have the same employees.
What are we talking about?
Controller. Controller. It's on page twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, right next door. Um, they've got the three employees in the controller's office and then the pension officers. And there's four of them there, but they're on two different pages, twenty-nine and thirty.
And they're all union? There's no checks and no salaries?
Right. Uh, no, the pension officer.
Oh, sorry.
There's two, yeah. Yeah, the deputy controller and the audit clerk are both union. Yeah, and then the, the, on the next page is your pension administrator. And she's non-bargaining. Um, and really, I think they ask for the same exact budget as, that they had this year. And I, I understand that they didn't use many of these items, but they want them available in case they need to use them. The professional services and the office equipment and operating supplies. I, they will spend the operating supplies. A lot of these things come in late in the year. The education and training, they didn't do any this year, but they're hoping, you know, expecting to do some next year. Yeah, so, and the postage, although we're paying most of the postage out of the general government now, sometimes they need to send things out FedEx or UPS or any, or they need to mail things. So they wanted to have a postage budget. And if they don't need it, they won't use it, so, a- as proven by this year and other years, so. Any questions on any of those? And the pension officer is completely reimbursed, a hundred percent by the pension.
Has that wage been throughout the years the same?
Um, I, I, I think it dropped a little when Kate started and then was, and basically that wage is controlled by the union board. So it has increased. It's increasing from twenty-four to twenty-five by a little bit more than the, the two and a half percent that the rest of the employees are, are getting. But that was voted on by the pension board and will be reimbursed.
Right, I just wanna make sure she's paid what she, she's due.
Anything else?
I have no questions. Anyone else have questions?
Okay, so.
It's pretty easy to follow.
Okay, so the office of code enforcement and development, finance, and code enforcement on page two of two, starting on page twenty-two and twenty-three.
Good evening, everyone. We wanna start with.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, we'll start with finances, the smaller two.
Yeah, that'll be faster.
So pretty straightforward. It's a budget for myself and our grant administrator and grant writer. It's kinda nice because we can break out and we can show, you know, what it costs us to buy the economic development funding loans and grants and what it costs us to generate all the grants that are coming into the city. So you can see on one end, the expenditure side of it. Uh, we hadn't done it this way in the past, but it, it kinda clarifies that. And it contrasts that to what is being brought in with those development funds and the grants, so. To give you a little context, budget in total is about three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. Year-to-date, so far this year, there's been twenty, twenty-eight-point-nine million in grants secured and roughly another five-hundred thousand in program income from the economic development loan funds. So, you know, it's a really straightforward, very, very lean budget that has returned. So, you know, it's a really straightforward, very, very lean budget that has returned over 30 million on 476 times the cost, so. Initiatives like the Fly Erie Fund, which helped to secure another airlines coming to Erie. Um, so in the new year, I'm just looking to keep the momentum going with, with both the economic development funds and obviously all the grant work that really Renee has spearheaded along with our grant administrator and grant writer. Operating expenses, it's just their minimum, some paper toner, paper clips. Communication is, that looks like the phone bill allocated. It's an odd number, so it must be an allocation of something. And that's it. But I, I'm really proud of what we've been able to bring in and what we generate and the businesses we support. And, you know, anytime you can run a profit, it's not our mission, but it's always, it's always good to do that. So.
And the communications is cell phones normally. That's about all that goes into that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have a phone, a self, a city phone, but yeah, whatever that is, it's just minimal expense. A little bit of office supply and a couple other things, so. Do you have any questions on that part of it?
I don't personally have any questions. I always appreciate seeing how much, you know, that department is, is an expense because it pretty much pays for itself. So it's always nice to see how much we're able to, you know, cover an administrative cost for grants, because I know we seek many grants and we've been able to garnish a lot of different projects for our community because of that department. So I'm always really welcoming the growth of that department because it pretty much pays for itself. And we need people to find as much grant money that we can to help with those need and want lists that we're always hearing about. The need first and then the wants. But definitely happy to see that your department is pretty cost-effective and it pays for itself. So thank you, Chris.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I appreciate all of your support. It's, you know, obviously this is a new fixture in the budget, but I like the transparency that it gives us. I mean, we can see exactly what our return on the money is. And, you know, just the quick math in my head, it's 76 times in...
$28 million. That's a lot of money.
A lot of needed money.
And, and it, that doesn't include the, the leveraging of the economic development loans and grants. For example, we'll probably year-end end up providing four to four and a half million in direct loans and probably another four to 500,000 in economic development grants. That doesn't include state grants, and that's leveraged usually four to four and a half times in the deals that I close. So, you know, those are all things, we really can't take a measure of that here, but it's, it affects the community. And, and we're able to do it without it costing us anything. You know, we generate income. So I just want to keep that momentum going, so.
And also, part of the grant administrator and grant writer are being reimbursed out of ARP.
Yeah, we're all...
Mostly the administrator.
Yeah. And of course, I'm 100% reimbursed through the loan funds, so. Uh, all right, so we will move on then to code enforcement. This obviously, this has a different look this year too. I don't know, maybe we could start on, do you want to start on the revenue side of that or expenditure side?
Would you be the surest throw up? We did revenue at our first meeting, so unless you want to like emphasize that.
No, I, I didn't know if you had already covered the permits and licenses.
Uh, no, we went through all those revenues and then we actually even amended a couple of them, expecting you to make more money.
Okay.
So get after it.
I don't like to run things at a loss. I break out in a rash.
Yeah, so, you know, we, you're the fourth person to be in charge of this department since we've started.
Right.
Um, I'm wrapping up my third year here, so. And not the last one, but the one before that made a big priority that they wanted to be revenue-neutral in that, in the code enforcement and the planning department as a whole. So, I mean, I think that's a very reasonable goal and, and, you know, I hope that's something you aspire after in this.
That's, you know, there's a few things that I'm gonna look at. I'm, I'm just still, you know, getting the first look under the hood. There's a lot of good work being done too, and I don't want that to be lost. There's obviously some things that, you know, maybe we can adjust moving forward. You know, we can talk about that more, I guess, after we go out over the numbers. There are, there are some things on the expenditure side I would like to adjust.
What page are you on, Chris?
I'm sorry, 23. These adjustments in total will actually cut the budget slightly, but there's some things I think we need to shift. Starting with 4024 tool allowance. And as I looked at the year-to-date numbers at the end of November and then I looked at the last few years, I don't know where that number, 2,600, came from, but we, I'd like to put that at 15,000. That's about where we're gonna end the year this year. And the year prior was a little over 14. I think that's where we need to be, is 15,000 there. I'm looking at professional services, 4041. I'd like to put that at 25. I think 20 is very tight, and that's still a reduction from all the prior years. Communication, we actually, I, I think that needs to be boosted a little more because this is the implementation of City Works and the mobility we talked about. And it's been pushed back a year. You can see in the 24 budget, we had initially...
Some of these reductions, because some of these reductions are pretty dramatic from last year to this year's proposal. You know, 25, 20,000 to 2,600. Are some of these things that are split up because of the way things have gotten shuffled around?
Right. Well, we split off neighborhood resources and we also split off the grant writer. And, no, the grant writer had been in economic development. And the grant administrator, I believe, was in the, in this combined neighborhood resources code department. So, and then, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that have been going on. There were vests and the uniforms last year, I think. Yeah, there were, but yeah, some of this stuff is just, the, the communication is, all those tablets and...
Right.
All of that. So you're saying that's gonna happen next year?
The goal is to test this in, I think March is the latest timeline I've been given. So we want to have that up and running this year. So that's gonna require, and I think the budget was, 24 budget had accounted for that. We're just pushing that into this year.
Frankly, this is all changed enough where it's hard for me to keep track of it even and break it down line by line. I don't think I want to inundate you enough to find out how it was supposed to get split between planning and this new department enough to figure out why that spreads. And you're also new on that. So I'm not sure you know either as far as the baseline that well.
It's a steep, steep curve I'm on right now.
However, like, if you just don't spend, you know, if we give, if we allocate them the money, I also, you've been frugal enough with the management you've done here up to this point that I feel like this is all a problem for next December.
Well, thank you. And you can see, I mean, we budgeted 25 last year, we didn't use it. So, and it was because, I, I think the thought was it was gonna be implemented this year. It's been pushed into next year. Timeline that, that I've been given is, is, I believe March is when we're gonna be testing that and have it, have the users being trained on that.
What's in that? How's our communication?
That's, yeah, communication, yeah.
That's for the GIS system, right?
Personally.
Okay, correct. Well, I'm just excited to actually get that thing going. And we've been hearing about it for the last three years. Whether it's coming from the budget of last year or this year, we know it's an expense that we have to, you know, have. So I'm pretty sure Lisa will make the adjustments needed to reflect.
And to offset that, 4059, I believe, can be cut to 400,000. So in total, this reduces the operating budget about 14,000.
Can you repeat which one you just said? 14, 50?
4059 is currently at 440. I think that can be cut to 400 to, to make up for those other increases. So in total, we're about 14,000 less than what's on here.
Any idea why it was 200,000 higher last year for budgeting? Anyone remember that one?
There were matches for grants. There were, the, the big part of this line item is B... I always get this wrong. BIU, Building Inspectors, Underwriters, BIU. So, yeah, that's, that's volatile. It fluctuates depending on the activity that's going on. So...
That was also where Timmons, City Works were. We put all that into IT now, so all the software's in the same place.
Yeah.
What about advertising? When I listen to the zoning meetings, sometimes the people come up and they say, "Well, we didn't know about it." Is there a way we can communicate that there might be a zoning change in a different way than putting it on a poll? Or how do they go about, sometimes, like, for instance, that place on East Grandview Boulevard that was up for a zoning change? And some of the people came up and they said, "Well, we didn't know about it." Is there a way we can put maybe more money into advertising to get the word out that the citizens know more information?
Uh, I mean, I can, I can look into that to see if we're using every method available. I, that's on the list of things I'm gonna be discovering.
Don't keep going sometimes.
Say they didn't hear about something.
I go to those meetings and I listen to what they say.
Like, I just know that, like, not a lot of people, I know my generation, we're not reading the newspaper. So when things are posted in the newspaper, it's not like a good chunk of the community's actually getting that. Also, unless they are subscribing to the digital subscription, they're not even getting the online news. So sometimes the radios, like...
Maybe that's something we can utilize, you know, the city's social media for. I don't, I don't know. I'll have to find out. I'll have to find out what legally we have to do. And I would think if we're meeting a certain legal standard, anything over and above that should be okay, I would think. But, no, we can look into that.
And I'm gonna say anything like that, if we need to transfer a few thousand dollars into that budget, we can find it in one of the southern accounts, I'm sure.
We put a placard in the yard.
Where, where's this voice coming from?
Andy, you are here with us.
That's me, Andy.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
We put a placard in the front yard so the neighbors will see it. It's an orange sign. We also will send letters to the adjoining neighbors to let them know what is going on as well. So we do our best trying to reach out to let the neighbors in the neighborhood know that something's possibly going to change.
I apologize, Andy. I forgot to mention your honor. Have I said anything that is...
It's good to hear your voice.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you sound good. Thank you for joining us tonight.
I just think you wanted to make sure that you mess up.
Breaking up, but, no, you're spot-on. We're just lucky to have you.
Oh, well, I, I did find one thing out with the uniforms. That was cut to just what we're required to provide by the contract.
Okay.
And there was vests in this number.
Because I'm looking at year-to-date and we were at about 15, just under 15,000, so I don't know.
Okay, well, you, you made, made it up from the other services, so.
Right, all the cuts that we had, you made up, so.
Andy, can you address that? I mean, I, 2,600, that just stood out to me, like, I don't know if that's gonna work. You still there?
What is this?
Jumped off the call, but I was just going on historical numbers. If, if there's a change there, you know...
Well, if, if you ask to bump it up a little bit and you don't spend it, we're fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Look at our budget, look at controller's office budget, like, this happens all the time with us. Just don't spend it and we'll have a surprise surplus.
Uh, so, yeah, those were the, the changes I proposed. And so it actually brings it down a few dollars, if that's okay. And just, you know, generally speaking, I'm, I'm trying to piece together what this is gonna look like in the new year. I think we've had some, some positive meetings and discussions so far. It's early, but, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be meeting with the various neighborhood groups, the neighborhood leaders, the groups, the centers. Some of this has already been scheduled on a reoccurring basis. I'm gonna be with them, walking the neighborhoods, hearing from the leaders what their priorities are in each neighborhood. That's the expectation, is more engagement. And I, I will be with them on that. And so I look forward to learning a whole lot in the new year. And we'll see how much an accountant can learn about building, but I think I've learned a lot already. And so I'm excited about that. But it's really about engaging folks. And we've got a lot of that scheduled already, and it's gonna be reoccurring. And I also, I envision this being a lot like the finance activity right now. Like, you all get a quarterly update on what I do. You get a quarterly report. Our goal is, is next year to hopefully be able to schedule a study session with you on a quarterly basis that you're gonna see what was done that quarter. And know what the officers are doing. Because I, I do believe a lot of this is a lack of communication. There is a lot of good work being done. I've discovered that, and I don't think it's getting out. I don't think folks know that.
Let people understand the complexity of the job either.
Yeah, there's a lot to this. And, you know, I don't doubt that there's some things that we can, that we can work on and tweak, but, but I know there's a lot of work being done up there. I've, I've seen it. And so it's our job, it's our job to communicate that and show you. And so I'm looking forward, and I hope that we can quarterly get, you know, get together and have a study session and show you on our system and actually, do you still want to show?
I have, yeah, I can show. This is the dashboard that I, has identified 48 priority properties that they're working on. And you can see how many have been blighted, demolished, repaired, and rescinded. And Erin Pence, who's our GIS administrator, is amazing. She created a priority property photo viewer so we can monitor the progress. And so this is one property. You can see, these are the before pictures. There's several before pictures here. Hmm? Maybe?
Must be taking during the storm.
Well, we wanted to show you the before and after.
Well, anyways, this, you're gonna see when we start reviewing the activity, you're gonna see a before and after. And, and the cases that are being worked on. So it looks like it's frozen now, but...
Well, I know, I personally look forward to when the software is working because that's an, an investment we put a lot of money into. We were hoping that it would make things a little bit more effective. So we're all looking forward to the aftermath of all of this transition.
Here we go. That's the after. On that one, that was the same property.
Oh, tell us.
So, you know, there's a lot of these, a lot of these stories out there that, that we just don't even know about. And so I'll be reaching out in the new year to do that.
Just out of curiosity, if you know, does anyone know anything about the house? Is that private investment? Is that public investment? Is it nonprofit?
It's private.
Yeah, there's no...
And the code officers, they work with people. They're not trying to penalize them. They're trying to help find the resources to make these improvements.
Yeah, what I've, what I've put out, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, this one you know. This one I have up right now.
What I've said early on in our first meetings is it's not about number of citations. I want, I want an increase in number of engagement. I'm not looking to write tickets. I mean, there's going to be times we have to do that. But I want, I want to work with folks, give them an opportunity to fix things, let them know that we're, you know, we want it done, but it's about engagement. It's not about citations. And citations are going to be part of the equation sometimes, but, you know, I've learned early and quick here that these guys and gals do have relationships in their zones. They talk with the homeowners and they give them opportunities to fix things. And that they're not going straight to the, to the hammer. We don't want to do that to our residents. So I'm really excited to actually walk the neighborhoods with them and be with them and meet the folks. And it's a change for me, and I'm looking forward to that. And then just quickly, one of the other pieces that I'd like to try to put into place next year is I, I think one of our officers I would like to dedicate to, strictly to rentals, to suitable housing. And not necessarily, I mean, everybody else is by zone and we need to keep it that way. But I believe instead of maybe having somebody as a floater or whatever you want to call that, I want this person to be dedicated to tackling unsuitable rental housing.
I'd like that titled that way in the budget so that it is.
Okay. Well, we could probably do that.
Rental code enforcement, whatever it is, but identify that.
I'm going to, I'm going to task this person with developing a relationship with the Apartment Association and landlords. We don't want to be adversarial, but they're going to clean their apartments up, their, their properties up.
Would that then change some of the ways that that position could then be funded? Wouldn't that open it up to CBG funding?
Possibly. I don't know, but we'll see.
Remember the thing where we just got audited from 2017? A lot of that was in code enforcement.
Right. But I thought it was because of what they were doing with their position, but if it was one just addressed to the house component.
So you get a little bit out of a qualified census tract and a little more qualified. I mean, there's, that adds a lot of red tape.
You got to take, keep meticulous records that are about, you know, beyond reproach. They meet all the requirements, so.
Not to say no, but we did just get reminded as to how much is at risk on that.
I think this year is going to be kind of a pilot, right? I mean, because we're talking about this right now with some other initiatives on how to help new Americans get settled here. And that's a totally different budget, totally different discussion. But we're hoping to set up some tools to help them, to help integrate them into the community, find them housing, to help them get their resumes. You know, Said just worked with two dozen folks and found them jobs. Those connections to be made. You establish a pilot and you can demonstrate that it works, then the grant team can go out and start hunting money. And, but you got to show that you developed a tool that works. So I'm hoping in the new year, we can develop something. And I don't know what that fully looks like yet, but I would like to dedicate somebody to tackling unsuitable housing, that rental housing.
We definitely need it.
Chuck and I had a meeting today with JCLA and they brought up a great question throughout at the end around lead, like identifying lead pipes that are in some of these places too, to help maybe track down grant funding to it. I know that the Health Department and some others have, in the Water Authority have really gone after this. But if we were doing some of the housing inspection, like the rental inspections and such, if we were able to identify and put that in some of the data, it might be already being tried.
I think the data is there already for the Water Authority.
Yeah.
And the Water Authority has something in place right now where they want people to do a survey, take, or take up like a picture of, to identify whether it's lead pipe. And then there's a program that.
There is funding available for that. And you have to take a picture of your service line. Basically, anything that was built before the mid-sixties almost certainly has that. They started the transition in the sixties to copper, but, but there is.
Do you have access to that same data system so that you know? So like if, or I suspect you're going to start to see overlap. Like, we're really starting to see it sitting in certain zones. This is going to be questioned for another time, but I'm just, with helping with grants and driving funding to maximize remedial stuff.
I think we're going to discover, I don't know right now.
Yeah.
It's going to be a new year and there's a whole lot under the hood that I'm trying to, you know, take in right now. And, and I just want to start with the basics. I want to, I want to, I want to make sure we've got a lot of engagements. And, you know, and just make sure that we're talking to the residents and the homeowners and helping them. And, and I think rental housing has got to be addressed. And this may be one small step towards that, dedicating somebody.
I think it's a big step.
And then the other, the other thing quickly, I think I had, I had a chance to talk with all of you about this is.
There's, there.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's amazing.
Yeah, I think I had a chance to talk to all of you about this is, is adding, temporarily adding the position of Assistant Manager of Code to the, to the budget that would be funded out of some of the interest that I generate on my loan funds. It's important that we get somebody in that position to learn from Andy, who is going to be that, that strong connection there between the crew and myself. And Andy, are you still on, Andy?
Yes.
You know, we've talked about that. I think we still believe that's a path forward this year is to get somebody in there to, to be able to, you know, pass this knowledge on to and get somebody trained up. Already hung up on me.
You're talking on the microphone, you won't be able to hear you.
Yeah. Andy, can you hear me?
Yes.
So we're talking about that temporary position of Assistant Manager of Code and how that would be sort of a, you know, a learning curve and an on-ramp for, for, for someone. I don't know if you have any comment on that?
Yeah. There's a whole lot to code and what goes on, especially with dealing with building permits and all the permits and so forth, that somebody, somebody's got to start working with me to learn the ins and outs and what you can do and what you can't do. There's some good people in the office that, they're well on their way. Whenever I get an issue, I will forward it to them to work on it and so forth. But I don't know how long I will be with the city, with my health the way it is. And it's just, well, anyways, but somebody's going to need to replace me soon.
Well, and, and, you know, I appreciate your guidance so far, Andy, and we need to get somebody in place that can start learning this.
Could be the internal move up?
Well, we'll post it, we'll see. You know, it could be internal, could, could be, you know, we're going to put it out there. We'll see. But the, but the important thing is we need to, we need to start moving in that direction. And, you know, budget's sensitive and I get that. So I can fund that for one year. I don't want to do it for two. I just want to do it for one year. And I think that gives whoever it is enough time to fully understand that office. So that's my other request, but that would be, you know, that would be in addition to then on the top line, you just add it to revenue or however you do it, reimbursements.
Well, I think all of council understands the need. And we have seen the last year of needing someone in the office for people to be able to go to and be able to navigate. So it's not something that, it's not a need, especially with everything that's happening due to, you know, his, his health and he wants to prioritize that. And we understand that. So we want to be supportive in that. And we appreciate him willing, right, Andy, to train the next person and work with Chris while he takes on this new hurdle. But you're doing a great job so far and we appreciate you being willing to do the current need of our city.
Thank you.
Last year we were asked for two new code enforcement officers. We amended that and added a third one. And I do appreciate the idea of that being specific to rental. I think that's something that we missed last year, to, to take the opportunity to emphasize that. And, and I think our council, you know, last year and this year, we've been moving forward with things to emphasize quality, affordable housing for our tenants in our city. And I think that's a really practical decision you made there.
Thank you. It actually came from our discussion, Chuck, about, you know, can that position, what do we do with that?
Oh, you don't have to give me credit for that because I told you I didn't see that comment.
Okay. No, but it did. And, and, you know, I was like, okay, can we, can we cut that? I don't know. I mean, I, it needs to stand out. It needs to be direct.
Yeah.
And this person's going to be charged with, you're going to go after the unsuitable rental housing. And, you know, and part of that, again, is building relationships with the Apartment Association, with landlords. You know, we want to have a good relationship with them, but, but they're going to have to understand that, you know, we can't just come down on homeowners. We shouldn't be. And so, I don't know, it's worth a shot. I think we need to try it.
But I would like that stated in the budget so that, so that we can make that clear. I think we have a lot of constituents that I think we answer to on this that will appreciate that answer.
Yeah, so this person will be citywide. They're not going to have a specific.
No, the whole city, specific for rental.
And the, and the crew, you know, the zones they have, they're still going to be expected to tackle if there's a problem property in their zone. They still have to tackle that. But this person is going to have the connections to the Board of Realtors, to the Apartment Association, and they're going to know who to call. Hey, that's your property. I'm seeing a trend with this person. You need to address this. And I don't know, it might be worth a shot. I think we need to try it.
You've been around a long time, both your background, and so you know how important it is to form a unit. These guys are out there on the street and they're all doing their job. Pretty much every one of them might be doing it a little bit different, but they're getting it done.
They're getting it done, but it's not necessarily being tracked the way it should be. And so they already know in the new year, starting the first week of January, we have a weekly debrief, and that's what we're calling it. And so I'll be sitting with all of them and zoning too, on a weekly basis to, to know what the activity is. And then, like I said, we're going to be meeting with R O S Bayfront once a month, walking the neighborhoods. It's already scheduled with the Sisters. Working on that with Snoops and with Best as well. And walking their neighborhood with their respective leader and myself and the officers assigned to that zone. So I'm going to see what's there and then, of course, I'm going to expect that it's followed up on. So.
They're nice guys, aren't they?
They are. They're doing good work. We just need to, you know, there's a few things I think we can tweak and make sure that that word's getting out. So. Anyways, those are my handful of requests with the numbers. And I'll be reaching out after the new year, maybe to schedule those quarterly updates.
You know, the one I gave them here and said, "I'd like to hire with somebody, but I'll pay for them."
Right, yeah.
I like how you have a way.
I'm only going to do it one year.
I want to say to council, I mean, part of the reason why I'm talking to them about some of those things is because I'm liaison to planning, which in our budget doesn't really exist anymore. You know, everything's been folded some different ways. And I'm not saying this is any criticism or anything. I understand the adaptability that leadership needs to get this done. I want to address this by the end of the year, that we fold this into either Ordinance 113, which deals with the organization of the Mayor's Office, that this would be an office in the Mayor's Office, or an Ordinance 117, which sets up the structures of the different departments. Planning was established as a department in 2020. And that's one of the things I push back on with Department of Community Economic Development because everything he's talking about, it sounds like it's either community or economic development. And it sounds like community economic development has become the Department of HUD. I think we need to take a look at how some of these structures are at the city. And I'd like by the end of the year to have updated 117 in an appropriate way that actually reflects the functions of our city with maybe a little bit of an emphasis to make sure that we don't have what I'm perceiving to be redundancies, but maybe that's because I'm not here day to day, or things that have shifted without appropriate balances. So, but Ordinance 117, I really hope that we take that down this year and put these things into actual code, as you've pointed out at the beginning, that this is new and we had a difficult thing, a difficult time comparing it to last year because it's new.
Well, you know, in a lot of ways, they are related, but they're definitely separate. I mean, with what Deborah's tasked with is a completely different animal. Managing HUD is, I was in that seat, I know. It is extremely rigid, it is extremely reporting intensive and monitoring intensive. And so they are, they are related, but they're different, far different. And, you know, I'm going to be out there, not in dress shoes, but in boots, walking the streets with these guys and gals and, you know, trying to tackle, it's like we did on the land bank. We're trying to get some of that right. So it's related, but it's very different. And so.
I would see it with, given that you're managing an enterprise fund and code enforcement, I would see this as almost as related as those two.
Okay.
And having us meet on a quarterly basis together will be so much helpful, beneficial. You know, when we go to the community meetings, neighborhood watches, and, you know, all working together, we'll be able to be in the know, so.
Yes, I want, I want you to have the answers so that when somebody says, you know, "What are they doing or why, why are they doing this?" Well, actually, last quarter, they tackled, you know, a hundred properties. Or like the land bank, we have, we have a measure for that. You know, we've tackled so much blight in the last couple of years, it was over a hundred homes. We need to have that transparency with this. And that's the same kind of transparency you get with the loan activity. You see what I do. You see when it comes through the first time, but then you see it on the quarterly report too. So I'm looking forward to it. I think it'll be a good year.
Chris Changin talked for a second. A young lady called me, says she wants, has an idea of starting a business. And she asked me who to contact, who she should contact. I kind of sidestepped her and I told her to call Gannon, a small business room, where they can sit down and make her business plan. But who would be the contact person here?
Well, that would be me.
I figured this, but I didn't want to throw your name out unless I talked to you.
I meet with folks all the time. You know, we're, we started this initiative last month with the New Americans, Brother D and myself and Said. First cohort, I think we had thirty people in the room? I don't remember how many we had. We have another one scheduled for January. And I, and instead of telling them what programs are out there, I actually gave them my underwriting list. And we gave them a heads up in advance, but the point of this was, I want you to walk out of here knowing what you need to do to get an approval. I don't want you to have a menu of programs. It's useless. I want you to, if you follow one, two, three, four, five, six, you're going to get approved. Because the question is, well, I hear this person got it, why can't I get it? Well, this person went through this journey, that's why. So I'm going to give you a roadmap to the journey. And I think it went well. We're going to do it again in January. And we did that with Paramount Pursuits and a few others. I presented to a cohort with Bishop Quinn's group. And the feedback has been positive. They've given specific steps. If you want to get funded and you want to get support, this is what you need to do. So. We're going to keep that going next year too.
Thank you. Does anyone else on council have questions for Mr. Chris Groner? I know he's more than willing to sit down with people who want to have the roadmap to start their business because he's done it for me in the past. He's sat down with someone who reached out to me wanting the answers. So he's definitely the contact person. And I'm happy that there's going to be a, like a large class in January to, you know, help people who have been definitely growing our local economy with the new businesses they're starting. Just in the last two or three years, we've seen a jump. So that's great for our city.
We did that with a couple from Cleveland last year.
We did.
They bought a house on. They bought a house on Ninth Street this week.
Nice. That's awesome. That's great.
It's great.
Thank you, everyone.
I still talk with them on occasion.
Have a good night.